It's not that time yet. Anyway, I'd like to welcome everybody to our October twenty-fifth Village Board meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask everybody, please stand for the pledge, and also remain standing for a moment of silence for Mike Hansen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first up tonight, administrative business should be a quick meeting. We do have a work session afterwards that the public is welcome to stay and listen. There'll be no interaction with the work session, but we will try to film it and have the mics working so people can hear what actually we're discussing on the table. And so, may I have a motion to accept the minutes from our meeting held October eleventh, two thousand and eighteen?
You make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Dennis, could you please read abstract number ten?
Abstract ten contains vouchers eighteen eight six zero through eighteen nine twenty-two in totals one hundred eighty-five thousand fifteen dollars and five cents.
Thank you. Motion to approve abstract number ten?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are currently out of hours for IT support, so I'd like to renew our coverage with a hundred-hour block of IT support from PC surgeon at eighty-five dollars per hour for a total of eight thousand five hundred dollars. So could I have a motion to authorize me to sign an agreement with the PC surgeon for IT support?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All business. Task order modification, HDR wireless transmission facility code due to additional work required to develop revisions to the wireless code. An order modification is needed to expand the due diligence to ensure the village has a comprehensive wireless code update. So may I have a motion to authorize me, the mayor, to sign the task order modification?
Make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll have one extra item this evening. I need a motion that, well, let me just make a quick announcement. This is our last meeting here in town hall, so I'm gonna ask for a motion that, starting on November first, all Village Board meetings will be in Village Hall, which is behind the Highland Mills Firehouse.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, with that, that concludes our business for this evening. Like I said, it's gonna be a quick meeting. We do have a work session following. So with that, I'm gonna go out to the public. I'm gonna start with the, to make it a little interesting tonight, I'm gonna start with the third row, work our way up front. Anybody in third row have anything they'd like to say? I'm not sure what row you're in, John, but...
I have nothing to say.
Okay.
You'd like row two and a half, so...
Anybody in the second row? Anybody at all? Going once, going twice, going three times? All right, thank you. Okay, board members, Neil, do you have anything?
No, yeah.
Tom?
Safety, 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 Halloween's coming up, but you're gonna say that, so no, I have enough.
I was just gonna say happy Halloween.
I'll defer to the mayor.
Dennis?
Just a reminder about Trunketry on Wednesday, October thirty-first, from six to eight at the Central Valley Elementary School, and on November seventeenth at the Woodbury Senior Center from six to eight, I think it is, also is the pasta dinner for John Berkelmore's scholarship fund.
Is it Smithville or Central Valley?
Which one?
Smithville.
What did I say?
Central Valley.
Did I? Well, when I went there, Central Valley, Smithville Elementary, sorry about that. Sorry. I will always know what is Central Valley.
She just aged herself.
I just aged myself, you're right. Sorry about that. Trunketry's at Smithville, my apologies.
Okay, Tim?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did it, just had one thing. I just wanted to thank the chamber for the farmer's market that we had all summer, that was just fantastic. It's about time we had that in Woodbury, and I wish you great success in future years.
Okay. Couple things, number one, we're in the process of trying to pave some roads. Of course, some of the equipment broke down and it's being repaired now, so we're behind a few days, but we will get that done. I wanna wish everybody happy Halloween and a safe Halloween. I also want to agree, I thought the farmer's market was a great opportunity we had here in Woodbury this year, and hopefully next year be bigger and better. And I believe the plan is to continue to have the farmer's market, which I think is a lot of people in Woodbury really were happy about. So, also, I just wanna make a remark, reading the minutes from the October eighteenth Town Board meeting, Supervisor Planelle stated he watched the October eleventh Village Board meeting, I'm glad to see he's watching our Village Board meetings, and he feels that it is deplorable that one board would attack another board. Well, I have to say, my intention was not to attack anyone, especially the town board. I was merely trying to correct inaccurate statements made by some candidates running for Village Trust Day. Setting the record straight, did require me to refer to some historical events that involved the town and village. All my statements were accurate and truthful, and I stand by my statements, but again, I had no intention of attacking anybody. With that, I'm gonna ask for an adjournment, and then we will be going into a work session. And, like I said before, the public's welcome to stay and listen to the discussions, and we will be filming it for anybody at home, and hopefully the mics will be working and you'll be able to hear exactly what we're discussing. So may I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you and good night, and if you're staying for the work session, that's great.
That would be kinda awesome. I'm wondering how many people were at the town hall that day.
What's that? It's in Monroe, yeah. No, it's in Monroe. Yeah, we went, we went there this afternoon. Very sad. Me? We never come up to see you.
But I'm surprised.
Oh, okay.
How'd it go?
Yes, I thought seven oh eight, seven oh nine.
No, Tracy's the record is large. Yeah. Let's go see.
Same wall, same wall.
It's nice and crisp if you're, if you're dressed more, yes.
Fireplace.
I made the effort when I put my letter in the papers to mention that the other hunter I don't know if it's gonna cut you off.
No, that's why I...
You're such as running like, no, you're not.
I thought I had some little font. Yeah, don't.
Everyone, yes, here. You're riveting me. Like, what you say, like, we must move, so I can't.
Don't feel bad, you don't think they know about wireless, since it has no wire.
Thank you, Dennis.
That's a good beginning.
Neil, just asking you as well, we gotta see that.
Hey, kids.
Good night.
Pretty, pretty pathetic, isn't it?
How's that? Better?
I like, I like the logo. Creative logo.
Yeah, HDR's actually engineering question.
Yeah, it's like...
Radius of design.
I kinda was picking up on that.
Don't get nerdy with Tim right now, because we gotta get through this.
Well, I... So, wanted to give you guys an update, but first, thank you for approving the add-on. Before the last meeting, I had to hand out with you guys was a map, zoning map with existing cell sites. I gave a little bit of an update on small cells and 5G. There's actually someone here listening in from Mobility, who was in front of the planning board a while back, and I think in front of the Village Board too at some point. So, in speaking with Kelly today and working with Kelly and Dennis Lindsay over the past few months, I just wanted to give an update where we're at and proposal for some next steps that we can discuss tonight and put some timeframes around. So, before the August twenty-third work session, I did some few guys a markup of the code. I got some great feedback from you, including things like looking at the village processes and meeting and hearing schedules with these new FCC, the federal regulations on timeframes and shot clocks. I transferred it to you guys with our proposed budget mod, a late September ruling that FCC just passed, which is a hundred pages dealing much with small cells and rightaways. We discussed together the trends, that things are looking to go in that direction as maybe the major tool in the carrier's toolbox for deploying antennas. Macro sites, conventional cell towers probably aren't gonna go away. There's one up on Village Property, up on First Avenue, that we're dealing with lease agreements and construction and things like that right now. But we recognize that this is a trend, and we saw the first one coming to the planning board from Mobility over, you wouldn't ever come if you remember. We've been looking at considerations of the comp plan from two thousand and eleven and zoning code, feedback I heard from you at the last work session, looking at shopping, hotel, and transit oriented projects, and recognizing the dynamics of, you know, what could be happening now in the village and in the future, and putting some things into the wireless code that are smart and anticipate that. So that's, that's something we've been, we've been working on. The addition of aesthetic and safety criteria at small cells, the idea that these would be in, say, the village rightaway on existing wooden telephone poles, feedback about possibly putting boxes, the smaller boxes, up high out of reach, signage, making sure people can maintain and mow around those poles and that there's no issues about them, and also some aesthetic criteria. In my experience with small cells and distributed antenna systems, there's, I think, some really great examples and some not so great examples. So these will be folded in to the code as well by definition, and probably an attachment that I circulated early on with some photo examples and specifications. Requirement for applicants to provide a build-out plan when they come in with an application, and whether they're first going to building department based on the nature of that application, if it's something that's not a substantial change, like adding antennas on an existing cell tower or on a rooftop that already accommodates, we want them still to, to kinda let everybody know when they're coming back next, or when they might be coming back next. And that could be very difficult, I think, for the carriers, but it's, it's part of, you know, understanding where things are going with traditional cell sites and also with the small cells. And relevant to the latest FCC ruling, there are certainly things that I think constrain municipalities and exempt from review. There's some layout with fees that could be collected on an annual basis, so if there's nodes in a rightaway, I know that's in every municipality that represents interest to, to get a fair share of that, and also application fees. So there, really a lot has hit in the last month, late September. So, these are things I've been communicating with Kelly and Dennis, I've been marking up the code. I laid out in this just brief two-page memo, the same highlights, those aren't gonna change, you know, looking to streamline processes where appropriate for existing sites and co-locations and upgrades, to really address appropriately proposed applications for small cell nodes, and updating the definitions and definitions of different types of applications. Is a major application like a new cell tower is a minor modification. And also looking to the process of applications, just adding more clarity to that. So even since the code was originally written, there's been several orders that we've been conscious of, those can now be put into the code. Shot clock ruling about timeframes to review applications by, there was a significant ruling in two thousand and twelve, a little more with timeframes, and, you know, since then there's been more rulings and orders on small cells and NAS, recognizing that that's the trend. I won't go into details, but if you're interested, I think it's a fascinating discussion, looking at economic development in the US broadly and this deployment of fifth generation 5G. And we're hearing things about automated cars, vehicles, the internet of things, et cetera, et cetera, and the only way that works and that we compete with other countries, certain members of the FCC board tell us, is to really deploy things in the rightaways, lower to the ground, put more of them. So, you know, changes to the code, I think, are extremely warranted in this case to protect the principles of the village, to stay in accordance with comp plan, to think about the future of Woodbury, how development may unfold, and to, you know, appropriately cite and accommodate. Our next steps would be to circulate a clean version to Kelly and Dennis of the code, updating things that they haven't seen yet, some of those items that I just went through. Also, to have a discussion with Kelly and Ashley's office on items that we put in and how legally that may impinge or not impinge on the recent FCC ruling. So we wanna make sure that, you know, we're conscious of the federal ruling, that we're being reasonable and appropriate, but perhaps not overstepping, because that could be, you know, asking for the trouble from the carriers down the road. Yeah. Do you have any timeline on this, on the next steps? Yeah. I think we'll get the, the code in for final discussion with our internal team, attorney and engineer, early November, is what we're looking at. There'll be a final draft that will go to you, probably a week or two after, after that. That'll be what, probably around middle to end of November? Yes, yeah, that would probably be about right. My thoughts also to schedule the public hearing, I noticed that, these are things that I think we'll have to talk after, after tonight a little bit, and then also the secret statements. So we're getting near the process where we, I think, a really entertaining public hearing. I really look forward to presenting some graphics, if that's appropriate, on a projector or at least talking through all these highlights, answering questions from the board and the public, as it might be.
So you would, you would wanna be on the regular agenda that, that night?
I think so, yeah. I think that makes sense. And speaking with, with Kelly also, looking at the six-month moratorium, she is gonna look into extending that, and that's something common in my experience with wireless moratorium that are federating. You know, we wanna make sure that we have, you know, everything included, evaluated, appropriately. Really, day by day, there's, there's things that I'm tracking, National League of Cities' responses to this late September ruling, for one, other cities and municipalities around the country, not entering into legal action necessarily, but, but, you know, giving some very interesting rebuttals to what is in there, and some of the, some of the control taken away from municipalities is one way to view it. So, yeah, I think that would be another next step, is, I think Ashley and Kelly's office will, will get back on, on ways to extend the moratorium into a very reasonable timeframe, not, in the not-too-distant future.
The only thing I would like the code enforcement officers to, when we get the copy to draft, and then also get a copy to draft, because, you know, they have a lot of good input, because they're out on the phone line all the time, so...
Okay. When you say, is that the building inspector, et cetera? Okay.
Gary and John.
Sure. Yeah, so make sure to fold their feedback in before, I think, before you guys see it, just listen to their feedback. I wanna ask, besides the, the two thousand and eleven comprehensive plan, is there, are there any other relevant, maybe broader planning documents that are out, or?
Well, the only thing we're worried about is right now, hotel overlay district, which I think you, you are somewhat aware of.
Yes.
That's probably the biggest thing. And we have a senior housing overlay district that we could roll out, you know, if there's certain parts that needs, you know, a criteria. But, you know, the last time we did a comprehensive plan, we were litigation for years over contributing municipalities. So, but I mean, I, I look at a comprehensive plan as something that should be fluid anyway. I mean, it's, you know, when you do a comprehensive plan, you can't foresee everything in the future, so...
Right.
You have to be willing to, you know, make amendments to it over time, I think, so...
Right.
Like, for example, this, this is, to me, you know, making amendments to our zoning because, you know, the world has changed in the last, it's changing fast, and we could even, by the time we finish this, it'll probably be...
Right, in two thousand and eleven, small cells weren't a concept, right? That couldn't have been discussed enough, for example.
So...
It's true.
That was a very short period of time ago.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, technology is, it's like...
The comp plan is not technology, it's just not a statement, document, it's, it's ever growing, you know, it's changing, document.
You know, I think the standard from the old master plan to the comprehensive plan we have now is twenty-five years, but I mean, we need to revisit that because... And some attorneys feel doing a comprehensive plan's not the way to go, you should just do zoning. They really, zoning is your comprehensive plan in a sense.
Sure.
And, and it's, you know, accommodate faster change. Yeah, and it's less susceptible to litigation.
Right. I don't, you know, looking at the, of the zoning map, that was based on the overlay that we, we provided at the work session, you know, I don't see another layer, or, you know, being, being put on here. I think it's kind of tough to identify, say, communication districts, but, you know, when you look at all the colors on that map, it's interesting, we're there for a reason, you know, with schools or residential commerce here, commercial areas, hotel overlay, as you said.
Risk preservation with the exclusions on.
Yeah. So, you know, a lot of that is in, in the existing code by reference, so those are the things that we're, you know, revisiting, considering on top of that, small cells and rightaways, and a trend in the FCC rule going to stay.
Well, we're also dealing with the, you know, green energy issues, you know, like the, you know, fan, wind, solar... Wind turbines and everything. Solar, you know, I mean, I personally think the turbines, you know, aren't that attractive looking, but, you know, I see them out there. Well, that matters code, I feel like, to the fact that... Yeah. And, you know, solar farms and things like that, you know, we just kinda did something a couple of years ago on that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Interesting. Yeah, I know the, the wind citing is, is very similar to wireless and like, you know, aesthetics, health issues have been brought up about those, believe it or not, at times with strobing and...
There's other issues too, like, you know, if somebody abandoned a fleet of solar farm, you know, you should have escrow accounts to, you know, dismantle, you know, people walk away from it. Once the equipment becomes, you know, it's not fishing anymore and he's losing money, people don't walk away from it.
Right, they're not gonna pay to take it down.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's an issue.
That's a very good point, and, you know, again, I don't see, if you think of that map that I distributed, the five or six locations of conventional towers, I don't see those necessarily becoming obsolete, but who knows? You know, another five years, what the technology, what the, what the norm of the technology's gonna be. But there is something very good in the code about moving ponds and putting, and putting that subject in there.
We, we have that with the utility poles last, you know, and we actually are pushing back on some utilities now, because, you know, like Owen Hawk is off the pole, and, you know, Frontier's still on the pole, and, you know, Owen Off it's on the new pole, and I've got two poles there. You know, it's like, you know, we're trying to have some control over, we realize the poles have to be there, but, you know, they, they have to work together.
Right.
You know, because then they have to consider the whole community, you know, implementing the install needs to back it up.
So, so one of the things on, on that theme, we've worked on some nodes, I think I mentioned to you, Town in Newburgh and R and W, and moving up into Marlborough. And, you know, very interesting what I learned through that process, criteria of a pole where small cells can be cited upon. Of course, we have four carriers that service this area, and the idea about co-locating on the pole is something that's important, and the idea, I know it's very important to, to you guys, is proliferation. So if you have, you know, AT&amp;T up on every fifth pole, does that mean the others are there too in the future? And how can we do something smart about that, you know, maybe doing some co-location, if that makes sense? So, yeah, those are the, those are the things that we just wanna, you know, put in what we can about that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't object to, you know, free enterprise or companies, you know, coming in here, but, you know, that's why, you know, it's kinda distracting that the federal government's getting involved and making them blanket, you know, regulation where, you know, that's fine in DC, but, you know, when you're in the real world, they need to understand, there's a lot more to this than just, you know, running around, I mean, historically, you know, law has always had a lot of holes in it, you know, in Albany or in DC, you know? And, you know, then even municipalities, small governments, a lot holding a bag dealing with this issue, and, and the public comes in and put a "yep," they know that's...
That's right, that's right.
But we're not against it, you know, we, we wanna, I mean, I have cell phones, I have wireless, you know, equipment at home.
And just about everybody does.
Yeah, I mean, we're not against it, we just wanna, like, help control it, you know, we'll have some regulations on it, where, some kind of control. We're not against any company coming in here and doing what they have to do, but, you know, we don't want it to look like, you know, a tent and town. And I mean, I think when, when the federal government passed, the state, they should've said, they should've, you know, made stipulation that these companies have to cooperate more than they do, rather than, you know, having turfism, they should cooperate with each other and, and, you know, co-locate and work together, you know, to mitigate the impact of the aesthetic impact that we may, you know, realize.
You're right, and for the traditional cell towers, that's always the less expensive way to go, you know, where it's feasible, and the code has something in there now about that, that really encourages co-location, it's a much simpler process.
On a tower...
On a tower, sure, it's a much simpler process, and the average person wouldn't be able to tell the difference, but when you're talking about co-locating another carrier on a telephone pole, now you're taking one node and multiplying that to two nodes or three nodes or four nodes in our town. If every carrier wanted a node, then now you have a cell tower on a telephone pole.
That's right, and.
Or you have, excuse me, Mike, or you have every pole with another one, you know, because that's AT&amp;T, that's Sprint, that's Verizon Wireless, that's.
Correct, so it's a little bit of a challenge to attempt to codify this and recognize that balance.
And maintain the aesthetics of the community that we're trying to protect.
Right, right.
And, you know, obviously, you're going to get the people that are going to come in and, you know, be concerned about health issues. And, you know, I, I know, you know, the federal government says that it beats all the standards, and it's no problem, no health issues, and I get that. And the same people that are complaining, walking around with a cellphone in their rear too, you know, but we have to listen to these people when they come in.
I'm used to that. Yeah, no, I get, I get it, there are always good questions, especially if there's a node application down the street.
Well, before we get further into that down the road, I'd be interested in hearing or seeing something from you with regard to the health ramifications of 5G versus 4G, especially in terms of distance, height from the ground, power of transmission, things of that nature.
Some of that speculative on frequencies, but I would like to present that to you.
I'd be more interested in fact.
Well, if people come in here and go give me a presentation, there'll probably be some questions you're going to get.
Yeah, a member of the planning board with the mobility application has the same questions about people that are trying to turn a road there.
Yeah, but, you know, those, 4G and, and the height on the existing traditional towers, it's been well-regulated, well-documented, well-planned. This is something relatively new, well, 5G isn't out yet in the mainstream, I know they're testing it around the country, but it's not out yet.
Two thousand and nineteen.
It's coming, it's coming very soon, and, you know, everything's going to change again. 4G was brand-new not that long ago, very good, yeah.
And, you know, it's based on line of sight, same way, and power, so the idea of it's every third node, it's kind of nice, it's low-power, and I could definitely describe, you know, thirty-five foot versus a hundred thirty.
That's a good question.
Yeah, yeah, so it's a, it's a little bit different, the questions, I think, are a little bit unique, and you're absolutely right, the federal government has taken to municipal exemption when there's a statement that they need standards. But those standards are written in nineteen ninety-seven, 4G wasn't around then, 5G, some of the frequency was born around then. So, it's worth giving, giving you guys a summary on that, or being able to talk to that, we'll be ready to do that.
So, if we have this by, let's say, the end of November, when do you think we'll be ready to schedule a public hearing?
I would say in December, till we do that, I mean, you, you have the clean code in front of you, there could be some questions or some, some things that you, that you guys flag in it. It's a twenty-five-page code, as you know. You might, may want me to reconcile the changes again, I'll be happy to summarize those, lay those out, but I think that's what we're looking at.
So, we're looking at December thirteen? December thirteen?
I mean, we're not locked into that date, though. That should be just a target.
It's okay, target, yeah.
And once we get the clean draft, then we'll start, you know, talking about, should we schedule the open hearing, the public hearing at that time?
Got it, okay. So, that's a target for the public hearing? And then I'll make a note about, you know, the notice requirements, and also, I guess in tandem with that, also would be the secret, you know, the findings, and the secret statements, so that would have to run out of time as well.
I assume this is going to be subject to two thirty-nine review?
Yes. Yeah, definitely, GML and the county, I know.
All involved in this.
Yeah, yeah, I'm thinking of, well, I haven't referred, yeah, and, and Willwick, we're involved with some code updates there, certainly the county had some comments on it.
Well, the last time I talked to Mike Sweden, he basically told me they're just prohibiting it, so I don't know where they are right now. They backed off of that?
With small cells, they were approached, and I'm not quite sure exactly how that was handled, but I'm sure, I'm sure the small cell infrastructure companies will be back.
Yeah, all good, for sure.
So, we'll see. So, I don't know if there's anything else, um.
I guess my question is, is something.
Yeah, they're great, I really, you know, took it to heart, and I learned a bit about some of the trends in the town.
It was unfortunate I hadn't missed that meeting, I had a death in the family, but I followed everything.
No, sorry to hear that, and we, we spoke many nights ago.
We did, we did, we spoke several times, there's planning board appearances and so on, but these, these were the things that I was, and again, mostly as the mayor said, because this is what we're going to hear from the public, this is what we're going to want to know the answers to before the questions get asked, or at least have some documentation.
And we should know, yes.
We'll try, it is a, as Tim mentioned, it's a very dynamic field, and there's a lot of inside industry information that we can't get from the web, of their plans and what they're thinking are, but that's what we hope to bring out, the application processes, get a good understanding of that.
Once we have a new draft of the revisions, everything will be covered, superannals, the public hearing, and before the time, the moratorium likely will be extended.
Yeah, I'll look up with a reasonable timeframe about any extension.
Personally, I'm not a big fan of moratoriums, but I, I think it's necessary, in this case, we want to get this right.
Yeah, I mean, and I, I'm reluctant to go for a second extension, you know, because it kind of looks bad, you know. I mean, one extension, you know, that's a little bit, a thing going on after that, but, I mean, if we have to, we have to, but preferably I would like to kind of wrap it up.
Okay.
Oh, it's just a thing, we, if we do an extension on a moratorium, it doesn't mean we have to take up all of that time.
Correct.
It sounds like we'd be ready to go in the first quarter, next year, or this calendar quarter.
Yeah, that's exactly right, it just gives us a simple buffer, you know, just in case, you know, we'll look to, to keep things moving, yeah.
Making good progress here, and, you know, to be honest, which I, I really don't really have a good understanding of, you know, the concept of the antennas and all that, so I think it's something where we needed your assistance to move forward on something like this.
I appreciate you bringing this on, it's a pleasure, working on something like this.
Yeah, well, we want to, you know, make sure we do it right, at least get close.
Okay.
Anybody got anything else? Okay. Jeff, I think we're wrapping it up here, so you can turn off the camera, because we're done.
Okay.
Good night, everyone, thank you.
Make a motion to adjourn the work session?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.